All right, we're good.
Like to call to order the budget hearing of June 10th, 2025 for the Saline area schools. So first, though, standing as you are able, we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Darcy Burwick.
And just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
See, Darcy, I knew you could roll with it. Member of the public may address the board. Are there any comments from the public, madam? All right, we're going to skip right over to the approval of the agenda. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed for, just for the budget hearing.
So moved.
Is that Darcy Burwick?
Support Tizis.
JT, thank you very much for saying your last name. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, six zero. We have ourselves an agenda. Thank you very much. And I'm going to pass the podium over to our Chief Financial Officer, Miranda Asley.
Good evening. So we are going to do our budget hearing presentation. And then in our regular meeting, you'll see those adopted items. So if we go to the first slide, I like to start, this is kind of an organization of our funds. So in general, we talk a lot about our general fund and we see a lot of movement on our property and bonds and things like that. So I wanted to take a minute to kind of go over these. The general fund is that first box is just kind of all in there. We talk about the instruction, the, in the classroom, throughout the school, seventy-seven million roughly dollars in there. We talk about special revenue funds. All these are tracked separately in separate bank accounts, separate funds. Within community ed, we talk about the taxing millage of the recreation fund. So that kind of has a separate box underneath there. All of these separate funds come with their own rules, their own accounting principles that we have to follow. And so all of these pieces just kind of shows you an organization of the greater detail that goes into making everything that we see happen here on the exterior work on the interior. Another thing to point out, and so we see the debt funds and we see those building in sites, some refunding. Those are us paying back once we draw the funds for a bond. We get the money to go out and do the work. So we get it all at once. We came to the board a couple of different times for approval for the sale of the 2025 Series Two bonds. Those, as soon as we get those funds, we start to instantly need to start paying on the, like, the mortgage per se of that fund. So that's why all of those are still out there because we're still collecting taxes and then paying those funds. So we have payments in May and November of every year where we pay principal and interest on those. So it's kind of, we're hosting all of seven millages at the same time or seven mortgages that we're paying on. Again, those are all tracked separately, separate bank accounts, very specific rules that we have to follow to make that happen. As well as the bond, you can see those kind of come in and then roll off as everyone with different authorizations that we have are tracked separately. Sinking funds also in there as well. Those are all the bond, maintenance and equipment fund and sinking fund. They all categorize them, the title kind of above them is just capital project funds. In each one of those, there are no salaries. So in general, it's very different from our general fund. We'll talk about that a little bit later. That is comprised mostly of salaries and benefits and people. There are no people that are in those funds. It cannot be used for salaries and benefits. There are purchase services to organizations who actually do the physical work, plumbing, different people that have come to you, kind of explaining our partners at Clark Construction that help us with those projects. So go ahead and go to the next slide. So the what and the why. What we will need tonight is the action for, we are amending the final budget for FY25. And this is also the time for amend or adopting the new budget for FY26. So FY26 is referencing twenty-five, twenty-six. So we use that last, the year that the school year captures is what the FY is used for fiscal year. It's kind of what that abbreviation stands for. The action we are taking are just those two funds. So in the summary document you saw in the big, long packet that you got for the budget packet, we utilize those, especially in our finance committee and things like that, to kind of look ahead and some roll ahead, just some very, we don't know what is going to happen in those years from the state budgets and things like that, but some roll ahead to say, where would we be if we took these numbers in a very financial way, did that. So those are for reference only, not approval. These are all requirements by law. You cannot amend a budget after June 30th and you must by law pass the new budget before July 1st. So that's why we're here tonight. The calendar complexities, I like to leave this in because we operate on a July to June date and it's kind of a cash, kind of modified accrual per se, how a school operates. So in general, when we pay teachers in July and August, those wages get accrued back to our June 30th date because those are wages earned in that year. So that kind of gets that complexity. The same thing happens with our state revenue because the state's year is October through August. So when we get a July state aid payment, our big method of cash flow, that July gets accrued back to the year. So that's kind of a little bit why it's so long when we do audits in, you know, they come and present to you in November, end of October, November, is because we are doing those accruals for July and August. We will have two fiscal years open that we are counting for things in both of those years at the same time. So the other piece that you're passing tonight in that action item is our taxes. And so it's called an L4029 tax document. And Saline area schools does a hundred percent summer taxes. It's not the same for all schools. Summer fifty-fifty, summer winter levies. We, this document then gets distributed to our seven taxing authorities that are listed there. And then they, that gives them authority to go out and do those tax rules. The non-homestead piece of the tax rule is our operating millage, which is eighteen mills. And again, that, like, when we did our renewal for another 10 years, we kind of focused on, this is where you are, do not have homestead on your tax, or you do not have homestead on your home. So a second home, a business are examples that would pay that tax. Then all taxpayers pay on the debt, the sinking fund and the recreation millage. So on the slide, it has approximate how much they bring in each year. It changes every year, but that's an approximation. And it's also on the mills. So I said, what exactly is a mill? So for every thousand dollars of taxable value, something's valued, you get the appraisal for your home, that one mill is one dollar for every thousand dollars. So you can see that kind of multiplies out. And that's why, so you see in sinking fund, it's even less than one mill. It's point three four two one. Those sinking fund and cares millage are subject to headly rollback, which means as a taxable value grows, then the millage comes down. And so it kind of has this temperance on it that doesn't let it get grow substantially faster than the mathematical calculation for that. On the next slide, just talking a little bit more about the state control. In general, some people say the myth of their taxable value is so high in Saline, why don't we have extra money? A taxable value growth for us does not equal general fund higher revenue. That is not true. The state currently set in part of proposal A in 1994 established the foundation rate, the formula that they use. They modify it every year, but the premise of how schools are funded in Michigan. The state in this example on the slide, the red bar is what the state sets. Says this is how much schools are going to get by this per pupil allocation. Then inside of this example, the blue bar and the yellow bar are interchangeable. The state set the outside, then the taxes are set by your straight millage that I just discussed in the last slide. Then the state will chip in the rest. And they will do this regardless of you collecting that eighteen mills or not. They say, we are going to assume you are going to collect that nine point four million. It's your job to make sure you do or don't collect that. We will assume it. We will not pay you that nine point four because you should be collecting that. And so it, the bar of what is for Saline is yellow and is blue. Every year can slide depending on the state setting that red bar back and forth on how much they deem that we get. And then also how much our taxable value does increase or decrease, we'll set that yellow bar on how wide that is. So we go to the next slide. So again, this is only talking now, we're really focusing in and zooming into our general fund. So as we talk about the general fund revenue sources, the pie chart gives you kind of a picture of, we really are state-funded in that concept. We do collect local taxes or other local donations or another local revenue is paid to participate or gate fees at athletic events. Those were, those would fall under a local source. Another, the intermediate source is really mostly our, Washington ISD collects their local millage for the tax and then distributes that throughout the county. So that bar itself does change from year to year, but the majority still is funded by the state. And then if you see the small sliver, we do have federal funding. Most of that in this fund has to do with IDA federal grant. We do have a small amount of title grants and other things that pool into that piece. And then the same thing is the data on the right is just kind of a reference of what you see in the pie chart there. And so you can kind of see a little bit of time. The data is from the green column, the June amended budget. So if I took the same pie chart for twenty-one, twenty-two, it might look slightly different, but the tenants are relatively same year over year. If you go to the next slide. So here we are looking at now kind of the revenue assumptions at the bottom. What goes into those numbers? How are we figuring those? What are the estimations that get us to these numbers? So you'll see on the top, the green column is what we're amending the budget. The yellow column is the original budget. And then the purple and the other blue are the ones that I'm just saying are for reference, kind of a roll up. If we see trends are going up and we just look at those and financially just roll those kind of forward, those are what they would be. So the big tenants to the things that went into those revenue assumptions, the first thing is this year, it was a loss of about eighty students when we originally passed the budget and what we kind of were counting on was a straight roll-up number of a hundred and ten. So I kind of put that in there just for reference so that we kind of roll back to what we started with. So you'll see the next year, the straight roll-up, when I say those words, what I mean is that we take and assume exactly the amount of kindergartens we have now is exactly what we're going to project next year and we are going to graduate out those seniors. So I'm just taking the numbers and rolling them up. That's been a reasonably close estimate these last couple of years. We have seen some growth in some class cohorts as the year goes on, some move-ins, move-outs. But it's been for the now, in the current trends, it's been a pretty accurate measure for us. So that's the same thing about sixty-seven, seventy-two in the next year. As we look at the foundation rate, that goes back to the state setting a per pupil. In general, this is how many kids after count, which again, count is in the fall. That counts as ninety percent of the funding that we'll get in this year. And then they use ten percent of the previous spring. So right now, we have already done a spring count that will be used in the calculation for our fall foundation rate. In general, we had originally budgeted at the time, the budgets that I came to you last year at this time, we passed a budget with two hundred and seventeen per pupil increase, all three budgets. The House, the Senate and the Governor's budget all had per pupil increases in them. So we felt comfortable taking a guess that we would have some per pupil funding that way. It came out eventually when they passed their budgets that it was a zero per pupil. So in general, that was a little bit alarming in that point in time. Are we going to be okay? There also just so happened to be another brand-new line item in the state aid budget because not only is there foundation rate, then there's a lot of what they call categoricals. We're going to pay you for this, you can use it in this way, we can pay you for that. There was a new ORS line item that was for two point one million dollars that we'd never had before. And you see in the next FY26, it's no longer there. So though we got zero dollars per pupil in a cash flow basis, we got extra money that we weren't counting on. So it was kind of a shell game, devil's in the details, though, because it's really important to point out that when foundation rate, when they add a number to it, it compounds. The next year, you are that much higher and then you add to it and you add to it. We got zero dollars in the per pupil. We got a revenue source that then went away. So it's kind of an important factor on how school funding kind of perpetuates year over year. The other big swing I'd say in revenues that we're kind of monitoring, intermediate sources, like I said, there's a couple of other things in there, but the bulk of intermediate sources is our ISD, county special ed millage. And so in general, we do get paid in that year, but then there's also a true-up in the very following year for actual costs. And so as we see that revenue did jump up quite a bit in that, our amended budget in this year, it's because when we finalized last year's special ed cost, the expense side of things, we had a significant increase in special ed cost. So therefore, our funding then also is following that increase of costs. And so I did carry still some of that forward and you'll see on some of the other slides later that you'll notice. Go ahead to the next slide. I like to keep this in here. It's kind of a little busy. If you look at the blue line, that's the per pupil foundation rate, you know, going all the way back to two thousand and six. That reference goes to the left for the foundation rate, the category or the, I don't know, the bars. Then the blue line, if you go to the right, that's saying the ORS percentage. Now, as you can see on the left, we're talking about dollars. The right is talking about a percent. There is no set exact relationship between them other than just watching their trends on the same chart. So when they're hitting together, there's no reference to why that that is because one's a percent and one's a dollar. It's just taking two charts and putting them at the same time so that you can just see trends. The, the main source of funding is that per pupil. So you can see, you know, those dips when our expenses increase significantly for our staff and also the same time our foundation rate. That was, you know, when Michigan schools saw a really big, you know, hurt in the finance times of things. As you can see, those have still both grown over time, but we're kind of in a historic time right now. We did see an actual decrease. You'll see that ORS percentage from thirty-one point three six down to twenty-nine point nine one. And so that's pretty, I'm not going to go into details. There's lots of different actual percentages for employees. There's many different ways that they can be a member of the pension system. But I'm stating the one rate that's the highest percentage of our staff is on, just for simplicity sake for these slides. So you do a whole separate presentation about complexities in ORS, so we won't dig into that too much. And so, yeah, we're seeing that blue line also continue to increase. So those are good trends for just schools in general. If our ORS is going down and continues to go down back to different rates, if they, the pension system is funded, that's a good trend. As we go to the next slide. So now we are flipping over to general fund expenses. So this slide is kind of talking about a breakdown of how you can look at our expenses on the general fund side. So again, these are referencing, these percentages are based on our FY25 amended budget. So it's kind of just this concept of there's lots of little slivers in there to kind of make the school happen. A lot of our basic programs and added needs, those reference the summary document that you'll see in your budget packet. But you'll see it takes, as I said, it's a whole school community to make it all kind of operate. So sometimes we forget about those behind the scenes that really do support all it is that, you know, we see happening here. And the next slide. This again, kind of looks at the exact same data you just saw on the last slide and it just looks at it in a different way. So in general, we said like departments or kind of purpose of what the funds were spent on. This is the types of, types of funds. So in general, our general fund is comprised of eighty-five percent salaries and benefits. We are in a people business. It takes a whole village of people to do, you know, what we do as an organization. And you'll see there are some purchase services, supplies and materials, and you can see those are significantly lower. So and on the right, the, we have a lot, a list of employee types, just to kind of, same thing to give you a roundabout idea of what it takes to operate. And I say approximately this many direct employees. It was just a quick snippet in time to give this slide. I did not go into detail into the exact amount of positions. It's one might ask about paraprofessionals that one does significantly change. Sometimes even throughout the year, a student moves in with the IEP and those are always being addressed on the fly. So staffing is a twenty-four staff kind of throughout the year thing. And this is kind of just, like I said, a snapshot in time. And this is also our, like, main positions. There's a lot more that are lists hourly temporary employees that come throughout the district. We have a lot of edge of staff subs that come through. There's through community ed. We have hourly employees through our before and after-school care or our summer classes that, you know, comprise, that don't necessarily get always captured in a snapshot like this, that are still out there. So even though this says five eighty-three, if I watch our payroll, we pay way more people than that holistically. But I'm kind of zooming into our main full-time, regular positions in this slide. On the next slide, so now we kind of get into the revenue assumption or expense assumption, sorry. This is the same thing of what went into those, into our expense numbers as we do it. So again, I'm referencing that one of the big changes was a reduction in the ORS rate. So that is a significant shift that we had seen. I would always budget for a little percent up, a little percent up, and I would take a guess at what that will be. This year, they've already actually come out and put out that they, this is the new rate. So that's kind of one thing that's not an assumption that they actually have finalized. But the other budgets are still left out there. We have three budgets. They said do not wait. It's probably going to be into act over before they pass those budgets. We see a trend line of our benefits increasing, you know, in general, not only just what we're giving for benefits, but also how many people take our benefits, how many people opt out of our benefits. Do you switch on qualifying events from two-person to family or down to singles? So there's a lot of things that affect benefits beyond just our specific offerings. And then the new positions. So if we look to the side, to the right, these are new positions that were not in the, you know, the budget before. So they're actually brand-new positions, except for the case of our OT, our occupational therapist. Right now that we utilize occupational therapists through our contracted service currently. And we have made the decision to move forward and have post positions and people are applying to those positions to have internal direct employees. So that's not a whole, it's a new position for the district, but it's a shift in the model of funding for that there. It will be more funding though. So I really wanted to put it here because it is more expensive to do that model in that way. But there's different pros and cons in the concept of which model to utilize. Most of these positions are in the special ed realm of funding. So when we talked about those increase of funding, these are kind of what I'm basing those on. Our resource room, social worker, our BCBA is a board-certified behavior analysis, speech, the OT. All of those are in the realm of our special ed funding. Our elementary teacher, we, we watch our class sizes and we are having that point to where the breakdown of where those students are and what is needed there. MTS is building coordinator. We're partially grant-funded. The EL is needed for our numbers. In general, our different, variety of different languages that come into, to Saline, they're not speaking English is not their first language and we have, those numbers are growing and it's a significantly complex group of needs that our students have that are not special ed but in another department that need other interventions. The, and then in general, we have unaffiliated, that specialized support also goes into that funding as well as the para's two RBTs. We're kind of doing a pilot program to give specialized training. If a para wants to earn that certificate, it's an actual training that they, they can do to kind of move into a different paid position because of their training and a certification that they can receive. So that's a little bit, not all of it would be a replacement. Some of it's just kind of helping our staff to better meet the needs of students. So you'll see in there, this, these numbers that I have produced are including the SEAs, the steps that are in the contract as well as our last negotiated offer of four percent. So we've already offered that out. If they were to take it, that four percent is built into this budget at this point in time. So the last negotiated offer on the district's behalf, the ones posted to our website, is in this budget. We've put this in, we've already offered it there. It seemed important to get that illustrated. We also had twenty-one known lane changes. And so as we talk about that salary schedule, there's columns that are for bachelors, masters and like double masters. There's people that we already know of that have submitted information that makes a significant salary change for those employees. And so that's reflected in this budget for the fall, the ones that we know. There obviously could be more people that turn it in over the summer, but at twenty-one, it was a significant enough to really point that out that that changes our line items. This also included nineteen kind of resignations, retirements, and those are ones where we have hired or offered. We've put those, those dollars in there and then all the other ones we're estimating at what we think that, for that skill set or that certification, what we think they might land on in the salary schedule. And the same thing for ESP and SASA union groups, that their steps are into these contracts even in the future years. I've stepped people along to make sure we're capturing those future costs. And really those negotiations with those other two unions will start soon. And so, because that expires in the middle of this upcoming year in December. So that's also in a little bit of a, it's an assumption, but also an unknown that we don't, we don't have that isn't reflected in here because we don't have anything out there for it right now. On to the next slide. It's a real quick picture of the thing that gets posted on our transparency page. That's in your budget packet. This is just a breakdown of another way of pulling up those funds and kind of tracking it over time. Each and every one of these expenditure, like sections include salaries in them, benefits, materials and all of the things that roll up there. Some of the things to note in the budget packet itself, there are definitions of what these entail. So if you're like, what is an added need or what is an instructional staff services, there's examples that you can read up and kind of see what are in there. A lot of special ed rolls into added needs in general. The, one of the other things you might notice in, or might not think about, maintenance authorization includes the districts. We pay electricity, water, gas. We have to run all of our buildings and another one is insurance. We have to, you know, ensure our property and things like that. So those costs do roll into there that you're not thinking about holistically. And again, we are passing the green column for the amended, the yellow for original. The two illustrative purple and blue columns are, are a kind of a roll-forward conservative estimate if you just kind of take the numbers and roll them forward. There's not any, we don't have any staffing models built in, into those and things like that. It's, schools are on a kind of this basis of we're, we've got next year where we are and then we'll start to make those priorities more as the year goes on. And then I, as we amend our budgets throughout the year, I will continue to try to get those estimates closer and closer versus they just roll forward kind of finance type of illustration budgets. If we can go to the next slide. So then this is a summary. That's the breakdowns I gave before, the same numbers, just in a summary format with the revenues lined up right with the expenditures for each of those years. And then the, the net of if, is it, did we have enough revenues to support those expenditures? Or did we, did we fall short in dipping into that fund balance and it's rolling that fund balance forward for each of those years? In this case, so you see in June, the, the projected, our June 30th, that like I said, we'll still be doing accruals in July and August. So it's not finalized. But our estimates think that we will post one point three million still to fund balance. So in the year, our structural, we are balanced in this current year, one point three million would go into fund balance. We see a starting fund balance of seventeen million and then we add that one million back in. And so then we're at eighteen and that is a twenty-three point eight percent of the total revenue for the general fund only. On the next slide, this kind of the same thing, kind of takes a history view of Saline's fund balance all the way back to ninety-eight. So it kind of gives a very ten-foot view of just the history of Saline schools' fund balance. So it kind of gives a very 10-foot view of just the history of Celine School's fund balance. So we can see in the green, like I said, there's, they're very straightforward roll-up assumption or projections on those. So they're very, yes, still very conservative. I don't have any concerns that we will land there holistically. We will adjust as we go, as we do every school year. But it kind of gives a starting point to say that things need to be watched and we need to continue to hone in on what our priorities are and what we're going to do in those next years. On the next slide, one of the other pieces is that we are passing all these funds budgets. So we talk a lot about and focus in on the general fund, but you are passing the community ed fund, this road service, student activity, debt, bond, capital projects, and sinking fund budgets. A lot of these references being a June 30th end date isn't super helpful in my reference because schools, we're doing a lot of construction right in the summer. And so that cutoff of June 30th isn't really super helpful. For example, you will see the capital project funds and if you look under bond, you'll see in '25, we have 61 million of revenue. That's because we sold the bonds and received that cash. And those go towards the slated projects that we voted for on in 2022. And so you'll see in the next years, they're very small revenues because we'll just be spending down that pot of money that we went to the bond, to sell those bonds for. So it's a little bit of a different reference in those funds for year end. And next slide, if that's it, so open up to questions.
Well, thank you very much, Miranda. But considering that it's 6:34, if there are anyone who has a quick question to ask Miranda, please feel free to ask it now. Well, it sounds like, Darcy?
No, I appreciate the presentation because I think you answered quite a few of my questions that I had emailed in. And I just wanted to say that I really appreciated that you took time to meet with me to go into some details on the budget. I did want to say, no, I'm not sure, Ben, if what they're seeing, if what we were seeing on screen was being projected to the live audience. But you and I had talked about like a couple of just number adjustments, just it got misrepresented.
It was fixed on the Google slides.
Okay.
Yep.
So, yeah.
So it should be in there, yep.
We saw the, yeah, we saw the old ones on the screens up here. And so in case that was what was seen in the audience.
Okay.
Just know that Miranda has corrected them.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Miranda. I appreciate that. Let me just go back to the agenda for this special budget hearing meeting. Without objection, I'd like to move to adjourn the budget hearing at 6:35.
So move Tizidis?
Well, it's without objection, so we're just going to do it. Thank you. No, that's good, if you want to do it formally.
I'm not objecting then.
Okay, without objection, great, thank you very much. Well, just tap out. And I'd like to request five minutes or so just to reset before we start the proper meeting. And could I ask Jason and Lauren to snuggle up a little bit because, well, Kate is.
Yes.
I'd like to call to order the regular Board of Education meeting on June 10th for the Celine Area Schools. In standing as you are able, I'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by, for his very last meeting with us, Steve Lodge. Thank you. I don't believe you've ever done one of those before. No, I'd like, I'd like to pass the microphone over to colleague Brad Gerby for a quick statement, sir.
All right, thank you for this opportunity. So it's no other way than just to do this, so here we go. On Monday, June 2nd, I was offered and I accepted a teaching position at Celine High School, instructing biology, intro to chemistry, and forensic science. It is nothing short of a dream position and it reflects the numbers of times I've taught these subjects and I, I'm just so thankful. I went through a comprehensive hiring process and I am incredibly humbled to be selected for the position. Celine is a great school district with incredibly dedicated staff who are the heartbeat of this school district and whom I will, could soon be able to call colleagues and teammates. It also has tremendous resources and of course, families and students who are just top-notch. If I am fortunate enough to be confirmed, I would now get to experience all of the last hand-in-hand with my senior grad. Plus, I would get to be fully immersed with Bryce as he enters his freshman year. And he needs a little more insight in his life from time to time, so that would be good. But really, this past week has been filled with a lot of emotion, mostly gratitude and humility for how blessed I am and potentially saying goodbye to 21 years of manchester is difficult, but I'm excited about what is ahead in Celine. The people of Celine will see and my board teammates will be voting on the consent agenda tonight, which includes the HR recommendation, my name is on it. As such, I will be recusing myself from the remainder of tonight's meeting. I wanted to see the fiscal year responsibility of finance chair and treasurer through with the budget hearing, and we have completed that. If the consent agenda is approved, state law provides that I am not able to be an employee and a board member. As such, my resignation from board service is required. I have presented, if necessary, Dr. McVeigh with my resignation letter that upon confirmation of the HR report tonight, as required, will become official. I will leave it to the board team to navigate then from there, okay? But yeah, but I'm going to recuse myself just in case of any conflict of interest. While I have your attention, I would like to state that I am grateful for the opportunity to have served Celine students and families for the past four and a half years, if confirmed. Board service is a big commitment, but is also gratifying. I hope that in some small way, as a teammate of these six individuals and of a few others who have transitioned on from board service, that we have made an impact on the lives of Celine families and students. I am proud of what we have accomplished over the past four and a half years. Finance is kind of my baby and I think we're leaving it better than how we found it with a 24% fund equity, mostly thanks to how incredibly good Miranda Ausley is at her job. I am thankful for the mentorship of my board teammates. If my resignation is required tonight, my official recommendation to the board would be for Tim Austin to be considered for treasurer and finance chair, but each trustee can and should vote your conscience. Thank you to Jenny Miller. I don't know if I can make it, would have made it through the first four years without your support and counsel. Thank you, Dennis, Susan, Aramadee, and Candace. I am also thankful for the leadership team and the tremendous staff of this school district who make being a board trustee a point of pride. A number of these individuals are female leaders. And though I don't want to get too into the weeds about recent events, I want to make it quite clear the high regard that I hold females in positions of our district. I have learned from my words, I meant no offense, and I am sorry. It is important to me I say this as this could be my last opportunity. I brag to everyone that I am from Celine. I am a Celine Hornet. To everyone who works for Celine, thank you. You have my admiration and you have my respect. I know you serve students at a high level and deserve my deepest appreciation. From the beginning, initially as a part of Girl Squad plus Brad, all the way until now, I am thankful for every person who voted for me and has given me this opportunity. The clock could start soon on 30 days. If you have a heart for this work, please consider applying. It is a great team. My last message as a trustee is one of hope. I hope that in our world, we can find a way to all come together for kids. I understand that we have different priorities, but something that unites us all is that we all love our children and we want their lives to be better than our own. That common purpose should drive all of us to hear each other and care about one another, even when we differ in opinion or thought. Every student in our school district deserves to be able to live as he, she, or theirs most authentic selves. I encourage us to always do what is right for kids and to keep kids at the center of our decision-making. In closing, Celine is a great place to raise a family. At its backbone is a great school district, a district that has a bright future ahead. I am excited about what comes next for Celine and I'm thankful if it, if it happens for any time, I would have been able to serve as trustee. Thank you and happy pride to all who celebrate. Good night.
Good night. Well, thank you, Brad. A couple of things. Brad, would you do us a favor and come back on July 8th so we can say a couple of nice things for you? Yeah, you're, come back, come back.
I'll come back.
Look, we, I think I interrupted a standing O for you, sir, but. I'd like to entertain a motion on the part of the board to accept the resignation of Brad Gerby effective June 14th. That gives us our proper 30-day clock. Well, effective immediately is fine, even though, well, the problem is we have a 30-day clock, so I'll have to ask for an extension from Naomi Norman. Otherwise, she gets to put in our next board member.
I still think we have to do his resignation.
All right, we'll change, well, this is just letting us know that he is trying to resign and he's already done it, so.
Okay.
What is your statement then, if, is effective immediately?
I think so.
Effective immediately.
And then we can ask for an extension if we need it.
We'll deal with that after we get the resignation.
Okay.
Effective immediately, Betty, if you're following along. Do we have a, do you have somebody moving this?
Sadly, I won't make that motion.
Darcy Berwick?
Second, Tizidis?
Tizidis, thank you. Any discussion about this? We already had kind of a discussion.
We will miss Brad.
Can I ask Brad? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So now, five, zero, thank you very much. Yeah, we'll say some nice things about Brad next time we see him. I would like to move to a special representative recognition, a student representative. Get it right, Kate. Kate, could you come up to the podium for a moment? We just want to spend a moment to say thank you, Kate. You weren't here at the last meeting sadly with Tommy Almond, but you are here tonight. And I just want to say thank you for being our student representative this year. It's been such a great pleasure and a treat to meet you. And we have a little certificate for you and, well, in fact, you're going to say something, right? Please, I'm taking away your words.
Well, hi, Kate. We are pleased that you're here tonight and want to present to you a plaque for your service that says, Kate Sonnenday, with gratitude for your time, insight, and leadership as a student representative to the Board of Education for the '24-'25 school year. Thank you for bringing student voice to the table and helping shape the future of our schools. With appreciation, the Celine Area Schools Board of Education. And we have a $500 scholarship to present to you. And Kate is headed to the University of Tennessee next year to study business. So congratulations, Kate.
Thank you, thank you so much.
We'll take a quick picture with the rest of the board, the remainder of the board, over to the side here. I didn't ask, but you're okay with being interim chair? And for the rest of the board, Jillian, come up to the front for a second. Ordinarily, Jillian's going to be sitting over here next to Tim or whoever's going to be sitting at the far end. And I just want to introduce you to the rest of the board and to the Celine Area Schools community. This is Jillian Hayes. She will be our student representative for next year, starting in, I guess, late August. You'll begin. In her application, Jillian expressed a deep enthusiasm for serving her community and expressed a genuine interest in the workings of local government. She shared that she brings enthusiasm, creativity, curiosity, and responsibilities qualities that will serve her very well in this role. Jillian's excited to contribute by engaging with students across the district to gather feedback and ideas. And she describes herself as someone who thrives on collaboration and values diverse perspectives and is committed to showing up and doing her best despite her busy, busy schedule. I know, it's going to be quite the year of athletics, music, theater, and clubs. You may have to knock a little bit off the plate, but we'll see, just give it a crack. And we're very much looking forward to you being with us this year. And if you want to come around and just to say, hey, howdy, hey, for a split second, and then we'll let you go, okay? You don't, you're not on the clock until the end of August. Did you want to say anything before we? Did you want to say anything before we?
Thank you for letting me. I was very excited when I got the call later that day, at my D&amp;D club, actually. Got to step aside for a quick second.
For those of you who didn't see, I gave Kate Sonnendae her little nameplate, which is pretty cool. We always like doing that. And I've got one for Tommy floating around somewhere. Right, public comment, a member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes, a request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note, students will be given priority to speak on any topic. First, public participation of the portion of the meeting is limited to one-half hour or 30 minutes normally. On agenda items, a second public participation portion will be offered at the end of the agenda, to allow for other comments. Individuals addressing the board should take into consideration rules of common courtesy. And the public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a board member, district employee, or student. First person I'd like to call up is Cody Stedman, please, class of 25 alumni. Okay, it's Cody, and I know that we've done this before. We have a yellow book and a red book. At two and a half minutes, the yellow book will get held up, and in the 30 seconds remaining, when your time is up, you'll get the red book and the big hook.
This is on? There we go. All right, first of all, I'd like to congratulate Jillian Hayes for being honored as one of the, uh, honored...
Me?
Hmm? Only one? Oh. I'd like to congratulate that. As a former editor-in-chief of Yearbook, and a 2026 sports editor for the Yearbook, I'd like to congratulate Jillian. Thank you. And on to the notes I have today. As I get used to my alumni status, I have looked back on my contributions to this high school very fondly. With my teachers and classmates, we were able to create two incredible award-winning seasons of both SHS Today and Hornet Nation, even having Hornet Nation being inducted into the State High School Journalism Hall of Fame, win the first Spartan Award for the Saline Yearbook in over 11 years, win the broadcast category for over three years in a row for the State High School Journalism Scholarship, and I was very proud to represent Saline High School and the state of Michigan, as Michigan's Journalist of the Year held at the National High School Journalism Convention in Seattle. However, today, I'd like to bring a similar but different matter to you. As new programs emerge, and the waves of change approach every single school year, I cannot forget the aspect that has scared me years ago. I like to think back to 2010, where the newspaper course was around, taught by Mr. Hill. At that time, the newspaper entitled "The Golden Sting" had already had its eighth Spartan Award under its belt. As the next school year approached, they were on track to be inducted into the same Hall of Fame that Hornet Nation is now in. Sadly, the course was cut from the catalog in 2011. With many budget cuts and a deficit in the millions, it was seen as a viable option to ax the course, to save money for the district. Now, coming back to today, I asked this board to see what modern-day Saline High School journalists have done. Everything I've listed was just in the past three years. Sure, we might use expensive equipment, the entire Adobe suite, and other aspects that cost enough as it is to maintain. I asked, no matter how many years pass, I plead do not forget how high school journalism has affected this district and this state. Maybe in the future, there could be a self-funded newspaper class, or maybe even a journalism class as an English course alternative. Either way, I thank Saline Area Schools for being so welcoming and warm for the last five years, from my experience, but even though I depart this place that I used to call home, journalism is a small but key aspect in Saline High into the SES compass. I hope you take all my words to heart while entering into the 25-26 school year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cody. I'd like to call up Georgia Frost, from the Office of Congresswoman Debbie Dingell.
Okay, I think that's on. Oh, yep, sounds like it. Oh, I shouldn't touch that that much. Okay. Yes, hi, everyone. My name is Georgia Frost. I'm from the Office of Congresswoman Debbie Dingell, from her local office in Ann Arbor. And what I have here today is a framed copy of a Congressional Record Statement that the Congresswoman and her team wrote, in recognition of Dr. Lottsch and his retirement. And I won't read all of it, because it's a little long, and it's mostly biographical, which I feel is probably not something I need to just say at you all, but I will read the first and last paragraphs, because this is the exact language that's now entered into the official Congressional Record, which is published by the Government Publishing Office. And so you have to imagine that I, of course, am Mrs. Dingell on the House floor for this part of it. Mr. Speaker, I rise today to recognize and commend the outstanding work done by Dr. Stephen Lottsch during his tenure with Saline Area Schools in Saline, Michigan. After 27 years of tireless service, he will be retiring. Steve's unwavering commitment to serving the students and families of Saline deserves recognition as he concludes his distinguished career. Then it goes on to the biographical part, and at the end, she says, Mr. Speaker, I ask my colleagues to join me today, in commending the incredible service done by Dr. Stephen Lottsch over the past 27 years at Saline Area Schools. His compassion and dedication to fostering the growth of the whole student, as well as the major improvements made to the schools and the district, have truly been remarkable and should be celebrated. We wish him the best as he enters this next chapter in life. Thank you, Dr. Lottsch. So yep, this is just the framed copy of it, and you can access the Congressional Record online, should you like. It's obviously published publicly, but this is a nice thing that we actually have to present folks with, so this is for you.
Yeah, let's go around. Steve's going to walk around for a picture, and we're going to do bunny ears, but, oh, it's too... Thank you, Triann. It's nice meeting you, Georgia. Thank you for coming tonight. I would like to call up now Parent Amy Tesselen.
Thank you, School Board. I am here before you today in support of the Saline Area School teachers. I did not write this down. Usually, I like to write what I'm going to say down, but I did want to share with you, and I've shared this many times, the value that I place on our Saline Area School teachers, my, my kids, and I know the grant, the big community, I am not the only one that feels this way, feel so strongly about the excellent work that they do here in this district. So it's been 155 days without a contract, or plus, I should say, and we know that the teachers haven't received a raise over the last two years, and in the past 12 years, they've only received less than 1%. And as we just saw in the budget hearing, we know that the funds are in the black, and so I'm not, I do not profess to be an expert at this, but I really join the voices of so many others. I implore all of you, while I do know that there is a negotiating team, I ultimately hold the board responsible for figuring this out, supporting our teachers, and so our teachers deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Appreciate that. I do not have a response to previous public comment from the last meeting. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed, please. Whoops. Tim Austin?
Support Gold.
Lauren Gold, thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Oh, hearing none, we have an agenda. Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the Food Service Management Contract with Chart Wells for the 2025-2026 school year, as submitted by Miranda Owsley, Assistant Superintendent of Finance.
Berwick, so moved.
Darcy Berwick?
Second it.
Tim Austin, thank you very much. Is there any discussion on this that we can throw? No, Miranda's shaking her head, no, no discussion. Tim?
I, I think we have four years we can renew, so this is just kind of a renewal.
It is a renewal. Thank you. Great, without a, well, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the General Appropriations Act for 2024-25, final amended budgets, 2025-26, original budgets, and the 2025 L-4029 tax rates, as submitted by Miranda Owsley, Assistant Superintendent of Finance.
So moved.
Tim?
Support Tizidis.
Tizidis, thank you. Any discussion on this? We just had the presentation, so... Well, thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Opposed? Thank you. That objection, then. I'd like to entertain a motion, this is you, Darcy, to approve the closed session minutes of May 27th, 2025, for the...
Sorry. Forgot to look for...
Oh.
Can you pass?
We can go to the next one. Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion, before Darcy gets back, to approve the recommendation for the Reuse Network, IRN, to project manage and coordinate the logistics of the removal of up to 2,932 pieces of furniture at a cost not to exceed $63,068, as submitted by Rex Clary, Executive Director of Operations. Do I have a motion? Lauren?
So moved, Gold.
Thank you.
Support Tizidis.
Thank you, Jason. Is there any comment? Oh, there's Rex.
So, if you're able to see the link in the board packet, you'll see that the Reuse Network will redistribute the furniture across several charities across the state of Michigan, the nation, and overseas as well, so it's a neat process. We are paying a little bit of a premium for that, but the furniture will be reused instead of being recycled.
I did have one quick question. I think line, like, one or two, you said something about it could be donated, like, if we, the cost could go down if people, if we were able to reuse first? Is there any, like, thought of talking to Saline Social Services, or anything local, or like?
So we do have a, we've talked to Braun and Helmer. We'll have an auction on the 19th, and maybe I can have Steve share that within his notes this weekend, where you guys can publicize it to your friends and family, but we could also reach out directly to Saline Social Services as well. We do have the furniture in an auction, along with grounds equipment, wood shop equipment, stuff that we are no longer using across the district as we re- remodel those spaces that have become available since the operations center has moved out. And so that we do have quite a bit of material online. They just finished up with the U of M auction last week, and that gets a lot of traffic, so hopefully people see, saw our name attached to that as well, so... And then for every 300 pieces, they're going to give us a discount, that we can get rid of ourselves.
So, just since we have a pulpit here, where is that auction information for people?
So it's on the Braun and Helmer website. Braun, Helmer was a former graduate of Saline Area Schools, 1992, maybe? He's a little younger than I am, but, 93. And so it's the Braun and Helmer website, and we'll put a link on the facility's website as well, that you can link to it, to check out all the upcoming auctions.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Rex. Hearing no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, thank you very much, Rex, for your time.
Thank you.
Darcy?
Michael, who made in support of that?
It was Gold and Tizidis. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the closed session minutes of May 27th, for the purpose of collective bargaining, 8C of the Open Meetings Act.
So moved.
Tim?
Support Tizidis.
Thank you so much. For those of you who are new to this, we're going to do a quiet read of the minutes from a closed session, not open to the public, and just to see if we're on the right track.
There's a small technical spelling error at the very last word, so we'll just correct that one.
It's taken me two and a half years, but I've got it. In fact, I was going to tease you and call you Tizidis or whatever, but I can't do that. Don't want to pick on, tease people about names. So we caught two Scrivener's errors, is that it? All right, thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, thank you very much. Darcy? I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the Neola and District Updates to the following policies, as submitted by the Policy Committee. Policy 5330.01, epinephrine auto-injectors. Policy 7540.09, artificial intelligence. Policy 7540.04, staff technology, acceptable use and safety. Policy 5500, student conduct, and Policy 7440, facility security.
I'll make that motion, Berwick. I appreciate the work Lauren did on that.
I'll second it.
Oh, Tim, yeah. Any discussion? I think you started to say something.
I just, Lauren did a lot of work, so I just appreciate her diligence in this.
I just have one question, only because it is not highlighted, but we, we did add the cross-references to the AI policy rate that we discussed last time about the acceptable use policy. They're, they're just not highlighted in green, but I, I do believe that those are additions. Okay.
If you are ready to vote at this point, I'd like to put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Great. Thank you very much. Betty Yonkey now has her marching orders to move this up to Neola, and thank you so much for your time. Oh, it's me now. We have two scheduled reports, or is it three? Let me just check ahead. Two scheduled reports, one is the presentation of the Athletic 5-3 Athletic Consulting Department Review. I'll read that properly in just a second. If you just give me a moment to get my notes. There we go. I just want to say thank you, first of all. You can go to the next slide, Ben. So on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to begin by expressing my sincere gratitude to Scott Robertson of 5-3 Athletic Consulting for his diligence in authoring the comprehensive review of the Saline Area Schools Athletic Department. The ad hoc committee, consisting of Lauren Gold, Tim Austin, and myself, with input from the rest of the board, provided Mr. Robertson with a charge, could you go to the next slide, please? A charge to review a detailed list of topics, as shown here. Let's go to the next slide. To accomplish this, Mr. Robertson reviewed a number of public documents, shown here in very, very small print, just to give you the sense of the documents. If you want to see the full thing, please look at the survey, look at the report. Scott visited the district on three separate occasions, engaged with numerous members of our community, even saw a couple of games, and conducted two targeted surveys, one for coaches and one for student athletes. In our, could you go to the next slide, please? In our limited communications, he noted and wanted to publicly thank Athletic Director Ashley Mantha and Assistant Athletic Director Jeff Pike, for their full transparency and cooperation throughout this process. Their willingness to provide Scott and his team with everything necessary was instrumental in ensuring a thorough and effective review. So I'd like to share, if you can go to the next slide, a few key observations from the report, not many, and then I'll invite the board to say anything, if they have anything to say. Could you go to the next one, please? Regarding communication, feedback tools, the report included some criticism of the current use of the Grit Survey for postseason feedback. It came up a number of times. for postseason feedback. It came up a number of times in discussion with parents and, sorry, with coaches, and it recommends exploring alternative tools that may provide more actionable insights. Next slide. Coaching resources. The review highlights the value of the coaches' toolbox and orientations which support our coaches in their organizational responsibilities. Notably, this level of support exceeds what is typically found in most school district athletic programs. Those are the words of Scott Robertson. Next slide, please. He also did a, two surveys. The Sports Climate Questionnaire, the SCQ, is a statistically validated and reliable instrument. It was administered to both student athletes and coaches and reflects a broadly positive perception of the Athletic Department. While the response rates were modest, approximately 40% of coaches and 15% of students, the results indicate that the department is largely meeting stakeholder expectations. Next one, please, Ben. Title IX Compliance. So I was really pleased to read that Celine Area Schools is considered a leader in Title IX Compliance in sports. According to the Southeastern Conference Administrators, our Athletic Department is frequently looked upon for guidance in this area. So, well done. Next slide, please. Professional Development. Our Athletic Department remains actively engaged with the MHSAA and participates in multiple professional development sessions each year. And additionally, I want to recognize that our Athletic Director, Ashley Mantha, recently earned her Certified Master Athletic Administrator Certification, which is both exceptional and rare. And the next slide, please. Coaching Recruitment. The process for recruiting, hiring and onboarding coaches is both comprehensive in this district and consistent across district subsidized sports as well as self-funded programs. The review also noted the increasing difficulty in finding and retaining coaches and commended the department for leveraging its extensive network to successfully recruit a varsity gymnastics coach. The report offered several recommendations to enhance communication and the overall functioning of the Athletic Department. And I just want to say one last word. Here it is, the next slide. I really believe our community should be immensely proud of the outstanding work being done by our Athletic Department and its leadership. Their dedication to supporting our student athletes and maintaining high-quality programs is both noteworthy and commendable. The Athletic Department, in terms of athletic team success, has had one of their best years ever with the Boys Swim and Dive Team, winning the state championship, yay, 10 conference championships this year, and two teams are still competing in softball in the state quarterly. Is it? Softball won tonight, apparently. Well done. And two, and girls soccer in the state semifinals. Well done. So there's your, your news blast. And so I do want to say thank you to everybody and I, I had asked Brad to draft a message, but he's no longer with us. A motion that somehow, I'd like to, I'd like to entertain a motion that acknowledges receipt of this report and closes out the third-party review that we had initiated and notes. Could someone help me draft this? Notes that we, we recognize the outstanding work of our Athletic Department. We'll just, we'll go with that. I think Betty's probably got it. Do I have anyone willing to back me on that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Tim. I appreciate that.
Support Tizidis.
Thank you, JT. Do we have any discussion or questions or comments about this report that we received a week ago or so?
I just want to say, I want to thank Ashley, the whole entire Athletic Department for all that they've done through this process. I think it was pretty, it was well done by Scott and we had not only coaches, parents and athletes that participated in this and it was very, I think it gave the district some things to think about here at the board table, so we can, some action or things at least to talk about going forward to, to maybe help the Athletic Department. And yeah, no, I thought it was really good, really well done. With the Athletic Department being as big as it is and having, touching as many people and impacting as many lives as it does, I, I thought this was really good and I don't know. It, it's helpful for us to see from a different perspective.
Right. From an outsider's point of view. Thank you.
Michael, could you just let the public know where they could find that report on the website?
I'm not sure if it's posted yet. It's posted Monday? To, oh, it's in the, it's in the packet, but I think we're going to be posting a copy of it on the board page somewhere.
Okay.
We can do that. We haven't made plans yet to do that, but it is part, it's in the, the board packet and so it's available online as we speak. Thanks, Darcy.
I just had a question as I was looking through. I didn't seem to find any reasoning for it, but do we have any idea why the response to the survey for the student athletes was only 15%? Was there any reflection on that?
From an academics' perspective, 15% is, is pretty good. From, from a high school survey, I think getting students to click on links these days is, is a tricky endeavor. So I, I'm not willing to read into the exact rationale in the minds of the students, but I think they receive most, 90% of their responses within the first 24 hours. And I don't know if he sent out regular reminders. He may have been able to juice up the numbers to maybe 20, 25%. Same with the, I mean, for the, for the coaches and assistant coaches, by the way, 40% is pretty good. I think that represented about 54 or so. Then the N is in there.
From a marketing perspective, anything over 2% would be fantastic. But I, I was just curious because this had been talked about for so long and it's, I, I'm just wondering if that's not a reflection that the, the students didn't feel that this was as needed, maybe. I shouldn't say as needed, but that this, the students felt that, that Ashley and her team, the coaches, were doing a sufficient job. So I was just wondering if.
Well, it seemed like those who.
If they were encouraged.
It seemed like those who wanted, had something to say, said it through the survey. And it was like, as I noted earlier, it was overwhelmingly supportive of the team. Lauren?
That survey response rate seems to be a problem throughout multiple committees and ways of seeking feedback. So if anyone's listening out there, please fill out surveys. But also, I think, you know, that was one of the biggest takeaways for me, which Dr. McVeigh highlighted, is that finding non-survey ways to communicate with families, coaches, students will be, I think, in building those relationships will be useful in moving forward, even though it's not maybe, you know, it's more subjective versus objective data, both can be useful. So, but yeah, I think the Athletic Director and Assistant Athletic Director for their support. I think it's an interesting process to go through and have outside validation and I hope that that is how our Athletic Department sees it. I think, you know, Trusty Austin, Dr. McVeigh and I said several times, like, we, we expect that this will be largely positive and, you know, we would like constructive feedback and it was not ever meant to be a punitive or, you know, and that is exactly what we got. And I think, you know, it's the proverbial second opinion that says, hey, that's a pretty good, you're doing it, you made the right diagnosis, you're doing a pretty good job here. There's always things anybody can improve on, but this report is really validating for our department. So, kudos.
I did, one interesting note to me was I'd read the report in the morning and it said that the Hall of Fame was stopped after a certain date and I walked by there on graduation day and there were, there was a start, it says, coming soon. And there were images of some of the athletes and I said, I talked to Jeff Pike and he said, oh yeah, that was like two ADs ago, they stopped doing it and said they, and Ashley, I understand, is taking up that mantle to, to keep that. Because it's a great thing for guests and visitors. In fact, there's a conversation about an electronic Hall of Fame that we're going to look into. There's not enough hallway, that's right. On, on, just a side note, on one far, I was looking at them, all the names very carefully, and one of the names on the far, far left is my sister-in-law who graduated from here, Catherine Cost. I think it was Golf or, would you know that name? Oh, yeah. Anyway, I'm looking forward to seeing how, what we do with that. And regarding surveys, I'd also like to add note, Dr. Lottch reminded me, we have a new tool called Parent Square, which we're going to be, perhaps there'll be some surveys going out through Parent Square that might get higher response rates. So let's just put that to a vote, the, the recognition that we acknowledge the completion of the survey and, or the story of the report and acknowledge the positive work of the Athletic Department. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Well, thank you very much. Five zero. Appreciate that. Thank you so much. And thank you, Ashley, who happens to be here tonight. And we didn't, I, I pinky bet, I didn't think you'd have any questions and you didn't. But I appreciate seeing you and I hope that, that we won't be strangers in the future. We'll see you when you do your athletic report in the fall. I think it's the fall, right? Day after tomorrow. I'd like to invite Dr. Lottch to the podium, please.
Well, thank you, Board of Ed. My final report. What I wanted to do is ultimately sort of recap where the district has been in the past and where we're at now and where I see a really bright future moving for the Celine Area Schools. Go to the next slide, Ben. To recap where we are right now with a little over 4,700 students, 700-plus staff members and, you know, Assistant Superintendent Owlsley was going over the number of teachers and paras. You start adding all that together, that's, that's a pretty impressive group and it takes a, a really big team to make such a great school district tick. So we're really proud of that. You look at some other rates and 14% free and reduced lunch, that's certainly increased over the years. A graduation rate of 95% plus and a little enrollment date. Assistant Superintendent Owlsley is properly budgeting for flat growth with kindergarten. Yet at this current moment, we're ahead of where we were last year with young fives and kindergarten enrollment. And I just made a note of that because I think that's, you know, a positive trend that we want to keep an eye on. With that said, let's, let's move on, Ben. In terms of superintendent goals, these have stayed the same for all the, the four years plus that I've been superintendent. And that's important because we talk often about how when you set goals, you're working on them for a series of, a period of time and you're always trying to improve in those goal areas. And these goal areas don't just end. You, you keep working on them and we're hopeful that the, you know, Dr. Kowalski will also carry on similar goals. She does need to come in and, and, and set, set the stage upon which she feels the district needs to be led. But I'm very confident that these are all in her wheelhouse, so to speak, too, as to important things that we need to be working on in the district. So if we go to the next slide, Ben, we're going to take a peek at each one of those four. We talk about academic rigor and the importance of that within the compass. When you look at these really high statistics, often boding the number one AP pass rate in the state of Michigan, meaning that we don't have the most students that would take AP tests in the state of Michigan, but we're often at the very top of 93% plus students getting a three, four or five on those rigorous exams. And I think that says a lot about our, you know, quality teaching staff and obviously our, our very smart students. We're consistently in the top 20 in the M-Step SAT composite of scores and we now have students outperforming pre-pandemic selves and state assessments. And we've had to work to get back to that upward trajectory in that area. The other thing, our curriculum department has spent a lot, quite a bit of time over the last four years working on science curriculum and science scores are improving in the area and we just have a more engaging curriculum, which is great for our students, especially as we, you know, open these new STEAM centers and such. So really feeling good about the direction there. If we go to the next slide, I think this is important too, that we talk about academic rigor, certainly more than test scores. And you look at all the things that are going really well, specifically targeting our CTE programs. And I think we all at this table talk a lot about the importance of CTE, but the numbers speak for themselves and how well our kids do in state competitions. You see these first, second, third places in manufacturing and then technical drafting. And then Ashley Cody was here tonight to talk about the Hornet Nation receiving 11 years in a row of the Spartan Award. And we had an official from MSU come and present that award this time to the broadcasting team and a number of alumni came back to see it, which was really cool. Go to the next slide. And this is another one of our goals, is culture of equity. This is always a work in process. We continue to work on this. Dr. Kerr is clearly dialed in on, on seeing that we continue with supports and then figuring out methods to accelerate that for certainly our marginalized students, but all our students. And we look at our EL program has certainly grown over the years and is doing very well. You saw in the report tonight from Miranda that we are hiring another EL teacher. We need to do that. We need to expand and we need to make sure that we're providing the proper supports. We also clearly through the pandemic have seen some social, social emotional learning issues for, you could argue, all of our students. I mean, that's been a very difficult time socially for most, if not all. And our SEL coaches are doing a nice job of coming in and providing the necessary support interventions. And then we continue to work on increasing supports for our marginalized student groups. And one of the ways we are always talking about that windows and mirrors approach in literacy is by expansion of our literacy libraries to include more inclusive texts. This is very, very evident when you go into our elementary schools that you see just teachers daily reading more diverse texts for students and students engaging in more diverse texts, which we think is great. Go to the next slide, Ben. This is another important area that we've been working on and that is helping our students understand what it is to have conversations to support civility and unity when we don't always agree with, with different things. And I really love the Heritage example of how they've taken the original bridge to civility and have made their own version so that the kids can actually understand it at terms and then they can practice it in a way that makes sense for fourth and fifth graders. So that's been great. And we go to the next one. And then we talk about, you know, the fourth goal and that's improving Celine Area Schools for the future. I think that everybody knows that our, our bond work is, is really geared towards that. But it's also about improving our staffing model. And I think we've done a terrific job in operations specifically where we had some real gaps in service and now we're, you know, close to 100% or at 100% in, in all of these departments. Specifically want to point out the buildings and grounds component, that our grounds crew, our buildings crew takes so much pride in the buildings that I hear often how wonderful the buildings look. People tell me, your high school looks brand new. I'm like, yeah, it's 20-plus years old, but we have, our grounds crew and buildings crew take such good care of it that it does rub off on our students and our community and then therefore they take good care of it. Same thing with the, the building here. We, we had a rep in today who actually helps us service our tile floors here that have been in existence from the beginning. And there are certain ways to finish them and take care of them that we've been doing for years. And he even said, you would have had to replace these a long time ago, but because of the care that your buildings, grounds crew provide, that they've really taken it to a new level. And it just speaks to the quality of staff we have here. We talk about increased safety and security measures. We feel confident that we continue to improve in that area and obviously the passing of the $180 million bond in 2022. We're starting to see a lot of that come to fruition this year in this, over the summer with $45 million in projects ongoing. So if we go to the next slide, Ben, we're going to actually take a look at some of the most recent updated pictures that Jackie got for me, which was great. And so STEAM Center is coming right along and is scheduled to be open in August of 2025. And I know that both the First Robotics Teams and Science Olympia Teams are really itching to get in there and establish themselves in those space, spaces, which is really important. We go to the next slide. The weight room will open the same time, potentially even a little earlier than the STEAM Center. But that's going to be a great addition with the movement. With the movement towards individual fitness in our PE classes, that really does allow for multiple classes to be in there at the same time, and really focus on individual fitness, so that when students leave us, they already have that regimen of how to, how to, you know, stay in shape, and healthier eating options, and all of that. And so, there really is this push more towards individual fitness versus team sports. If we go to the next slide, we also know that we have, well, if you step outside, you see a lot of dirt being moved. The Liberty Athletic Complex is, is torn up and is being renovated, and we're really excited for this space. It's going to be fantastic. If we keep moving here, Ben. And then, the senior center itself is going to have a, a really nice upgrade, and we're looking forward to being able to, you know, provided more square footage than originally planned, and to make sure that that's a space that our seniors can go and are proud of, and can, and do more things in their expanded fitness areas, places to convene, and just upgraded facilities across the board. If we go to the next slide, I want to talk a little bit about, this is more of the future. So, this is part of the renovated, revised, updated compass. It still is going to incorporate the four Cs and, and all those, what we call soft skills or durable skills, but it's trying to get at it from a, a couple of different angles. The first one is through these cardinal directions, the north, south, east, west, which I'm deeming the two Ps and two Cs. We talk about purpose possibilities, challenges, and connections. And then, there's a little roadmap of what those mean on the right side there, with north ignite, east explore, south embrace, and west build. And then, it talks about the importance of doing those things. And if we go to the next slide, Ben, the, the other part of the supporting values that you see in the yellow highlights on the outside. So, it's a more simplified compass, and in this, the supporting values talks about what values the Selenary Schools hold, and it maps that out there. And then, the next step that I'm excited about is the implementation of this. With Kara Davis and the Teaching and Learning Team, they are working towards implementation, where our teaching staff know how to integrate it into the curriculum and use this vocabulary with students, so that they're not creating brand-new lessons, they're doing it right within their science lessons, or math lessons, or, or any lesson that they're working on, where they can make sure that they are talking to kids about, okay, we're going to ask questions about curiosity when we do this experiment, and you're going to come up with three ways in which you're curious, and then they have conversations about it. So, a lot of this is about implementation of how you talk and work with students differently to incorporate these skills, so they get practice using them through the academic content. So, we're excited about that, that renovation. And then, if we go to the last slide, it's just a great time to be a student in Selenary Schools. So, I just wanted to leave with that. I don't know if there's any questions, but feeling great about the direction of the district, and with Dr. Kowalski coming on board, and have been having some great transition days with her already.
You, you and your team have left this district in remarkable hands, or you've passed, you've passed, or passed on to Dr. Kowalski some, some excellent work already, so thank you very much, sir. Well, thank you. Appreciate that. We should do one of these every year, little state of the, state of the district. I'd like to, now, Tim wasn't expecting to do any speaking at this point, but I'd like to invite him as our interim Finance Committee Chair to provide an update of today's meeting.
So, first, I want to thank Brad for his work as a treasurer over the years. He's, puts a lot of time and effort into that, and he's, he's served it well. Also, want to thank Miranda for all those that were here earlier for the budget hearing. There's a lot of work that goes into our budget, and so many different line items, very confusing. Some things are just projections and kind of a dart, just being thrown out there. State requires us to set our budget now, but they don't set their budget till later, so it's somewhat some unknowns there. Also, we looked a little bit deeper in our Budget Committee meeting, Finance Committee meeting, into some, deeper into the line items on a couple of different areas, like instructional staff services and maintenance and operations. Miranda has, in the budget hearing, given us an overview of it in our packet, but, you know, you can dive deeper, and we could even probably dive deeper into more weeds if we wanted to. And then, just the next Finance Committee meeting will be in August 12th. We won't be having one. It'll be at four o'clock on August 12th, to accommodate the finance, or the Policy Committee.
I was just wondering if you could speak as to, like, the increased needs of the district upcoming financially over the next two years, and looking at the fund balance in terms of what you talked about in committee. And I know why you go into the, and, you know, you know, Assistant Superintendent Owlsley talked about the English learners and the new hires. Is that the kind of stuff that you talked about at the meeting, or is there more you can tell us about, sort of, those projections, and, you know, as we're trying to figure this out?
Yeah, so we did talk about some of that stuff, and one thing, when talking about that slide, where you saw the, a lot of those, because I brought that up as well, and a lot of those positions are being funded through grants in, or special ed funding, so Act 18-type stuff. So, so a lot of those, there's only two positions that are, the elementary school teacher position is a new hire that's not funded outside, but that's a need. And then, I think the art, the art teacher was also. But then, one of the things that was important for me to see, too, in the budget projection going out, was not a zero-dollar increase per pupil. So, she did build in two-hundred dollars per pupil increase. Now, she also did straight-line assumptions for enrollment, so we do have some losses in enrollment there, but at least we built in some kind of assumption for, per pupil increases, because I think, you know, we don't know what we'll get. It might be more, it might be less, but there's something there. Did that answer?
That was excellent for being, without.
Yeah, no, that's, I wasn't questioning, like, the, you know, the necessity of the hires. I just was, just trying to, like, gain more understanding of, and sort of speak publicly more to understanding of what the limitations of the budget are moving forward, what the projections are looking at, and how, how the team is really kind of forecasting and all that goes into it.
So, one of the things, I guess I'll just kind of go off on a little bit of a tangent here, is I, I went through in this budget package and kind of looked at, like, okay, eighteen, nineteen, and then our twenty-five, twenty-six. Picked out some of the things that I saw really big increases in, some forty-three percent increase in added needs. But that directly relates to intermediate service sources in funding. If you look at intermediate sources, that went up forty percent, and that's a lot of our Act 18 money, so they kind of go hand in hand. Then, the basic programs went up about five-point-two percent. Pupil support, twenty-eight percent, instructional staff, thirty-nine percent, general administration, six. So, I, I looked at some of those, and then, when we dove into, like, maintenance and operations, let's say, we looked at that, and then, we, just from twenty-one, this is kind of crazy, from twenty-one through, to the twenty-five budget, the trash disposals went from eighteen thousand dollars to fifty-eight thousand dollars, just in trash. So, it was kind of neat to kind of dig down into some of those. Insurance went from one-hundred-and-eighteen thousand to five-hundred-and-forty thousand. So, those are some big numbers in just everyday expenses.
Thank you.
Well, great, well, thank you, Tim, for that, and if you have more details, we're looking forward to hearing after the August 12th meeting, was it, you said? Twelve, thank you. Administration Board Updates. We'll start with Steve, and then, over to you, Tim.
Okay, well, I really will give my final farewell message right now. I just wanted to read something similar to what I sent out to the staff at the, well, the last day of school with students. But it's really been an honor to work alongside of all of you for these past twenty-seven years. When I was first hired here in nineteen ninety-seven as a teacher in Heritage School, I really did feel like, wow, I have come into the best situation and best district in Michigan, and a little did I know that I would stay here the entire time, but it's been, it's been great. And as I've grown over the years in my leadership capacity, I've always tried to provide the right amount of guidance, to put people in positions to be successful, and encourage them to really accomplish goals that maybe they didn't know if they could do or not. And I, and I've tried to do that with really everybody, whether it's Board of Education trustees, and working with all of you, or students, or teachers, or various staff members. Because I really do think that one thing that is somewhat unique about this community, the community does educate all the students in various ways. I mean, whether it's Darcy helping out at some of the STEAM events, or a lot of that support you see on the weekends from parents or community members getting involved, or even in Rotary Club that I've been a part of, and helping, you know, with a recycle club at, at the high school level. Those kinds of things show sort of a commitment from a community to really come together and recognize that it's all our jobs to educate our kids, and all of you have been exceptional with that, and, and I just want to thank you for that. With that said, my next steps, I am looking forward to getting involved in some educational consulting, leadership, and mentoring roles. But I'm very confident in Dr. Kowalski's ability to come into the district and do really well. We've had some great transition days. We have three other transition days set up in the next couple of weeks, and then, I feel like I'm, I'm passing the torch on to someone who's going to come in and do, do very well and work well with the community. So, with that said, thanks for your support, and go Hornets.
Well, thank you. I'm sure we'll see you here and there. Tim?
Just want to thank Steve again for his twenty-seven years of service here. He's really poured his heart and soul into this district, and thank you. Thanks to all of our staff for their hard work this year, and hopefully, they can get a little bit of a breather. And attended graduation, and that is probably one of the highlights of being a board member, is going to graduation and watching all those kids walk across the stage. That's pretty exciting for them.
Darcy?
Yes, thank you again to Steve for your, your guidance and support through the years. We will miss you. We are excited for Rachel to come, and it looks like we will be getting a new board member at some point here soon. We missed Brad already, and I've known him about four and a half years now, five years now, and I know that his heart is really with the students, and we will benefit with him as a teacher in the district. Thank you to all of the teachers and the support staff for taking care of our children and educating them, and look forward to a new start.
Thank you, Darcy. I just want to note three quick things. First of all, thank you for the other board member, Er, who joined me at the Pride Flag Raising. I know you forgot about that. We were joined by councilpersons Dylan and Gerbaks, the mayor, as well as Representative Foreman, and, and two former school board members were there as well. And you know who you are. Looking at you, Esther.
I did mean to say happy pride to those who celebrate.
That's okay. Thank you. Also, I'd like to note that the WISD election, there was a runoff vote a week ago Monday. Dorcas Musili ran unopposed for the partial term, and Diane Hawke had a plurality vote. She, she won the one seat, and we had to have a runoff between Eric John Roberts and Mary Jane Tramonton, and in the end, it was seven-two for Mary Jane. So, thank you for letting me be your elector. There will be a press release going out really soon, probably tomorrow morning, early in the morning, talking about some of the steps, the next steps for finding replacement for Brad. And, yes, so I think the, the window's open right now. I'm going to, I've shared this with everyone, I didn't get any pushback, so we'll open the window for two weeks for members from the community who live in the Selenary Schools District and are eligible to vote, so no seventeen-year-old sadly, and, and details to come about how that process works. Okay? I'll pass this over to Lauren.
Okay, there's a lot going on in June, but I'll try to be brief. Congratulations to Superintendent Lott on his retirement, and I'm thankful for his leadership and helping onboard me as a newer board member. Sincere thanks to Trustee Gerby, who helped mentor me even as I was running and trying to understand the finances of the school district and beyond, what we would call in my culture of mensch of highest order, so I'll have to explain to him what that means. On a more serious note, I do, I do not have any orange in my closet, but June is Gun Violence Awareness Month, and gun violence continues to be a leading cause of death for children, including unlocked guns in homes, children and families experiencing death by suicide, and homicide, accidental deaths. And that doesn't even get into the morbidity and the generational trauma that is caused by gun violence. So, I'd like to just remind the community that gun locks are available at the police station. I love, you know, Michigan, up north hunting culture, all great, just please store your guns safely, and, you know, be sure to ask if your kids are going places, if those places are having the guns safely stored. I often tell my patients' families that they can blame their pediatrician when they have that awkward conversation. And that isn't just little kids. Don't forget teenagers. And then, I would like to honor the LGBTQ community during Pride Month. They make our community better, and I hope it's a happy, healthy, and safe pride.
I will be quick. Just congratulations to Steve on his retirement. Good luck with that. Congrats to our now-former colleague, Brad, so good luck to him, looking forward to that. And congratulations to all the 2025 grads, so good luck on your futures, and that is it for me.
Thank you very much, Jason. I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize the consent agenda as printed. Tim, Austin?
Second, Perwick.
RC Burkle, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, five-zero. Appreciate that. Items on the next agenda, sir, oh, you're not setting the next agenda?
Dr. Kowalski's next meeting.
Her first meeting, too.
Yeah, first meeting, so, well, so far, what's on the agenda, approval of bank accounts, tech update from Jay Grossman and his team, and FSAS extended comment from Stacy.
Well, thank you very much. We're going to miss the, having you at the table, Steve. Public comment, any member of the public can, no, there are no public comments, so I would, the next board meeting will be held on July eighth at six-thirty. We, I'd like to entertain a motion to enter closed session of the Board of Ed at seven-fifty-two. Yeah, we're going to take a little break with the, okay, we'll say seven-fifty, we'll say eight o'clock, with the intent to open, reopen at about eight-thirty, Tim? Eight forty-three. Thank you. Eight-thirty. Our guests for this evening, oh, and it's for the purpose of collective bargaining, HC of the Open Meetings Act under HC, a simple majority is necessary, sufficient to enter into a closed session. Our guest will be Tim Gardner and some members of the negotiating team. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Jason? Tim, thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. So, we'll get back here in closed session at eight o'clock. Thank you so much.
Go ahead.
Without, without objection, I'd like to return to the open session at 9:52. And, okay, we are back in open session now. I just wanted to say, to clarify something. At the beginning, it was quite chaotic when Brad hit the resignation button. At the beginning, it was quite chaotic when Brad hit the resignation button. But I did want to point out that Brad's resignation letter was dated June 21st. June 21st, here it is. June 21st, and that will put us within the 30-day timeframe to get a replacement. That'll be clarified in the, in the press release that'll come out tomorrow morning. Just wanted to clarify that. It's June 21st. Brad did the right thing by recusing himself and stepping away from the board meeting from here. And it's been a great pleasure working with Brad. And that's one of the reasons his, his high, his high ethical sense is greatly appreciated. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the board meeting of whatever date this is. I've lost my agenda. Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved gold.
Gold. Do we have second? Tim Austin, you want to stick around? All in favor, please say aye. Oh, at, sorry, at 9:53. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.